Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the Board of Supervisors come out of closed session and reconvene in open session.
Motion is your second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those, no? Question, here.
Chairman, I'd move that to the best of each Board member's knowledge, the Board discussed only matters involving consultation with legal counsel, specifically legal matters concerning the Russell 150 Community Development Authority assessments, related charges, fees and cost, and the memorandum of understanding dated May 1, 2007, setting forth various understanding with respect to the Russell 150 Community Development Authority. Said consultation requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. And now we'll reconvene our regular meeting. Supervisor Hess, would you lead us in the invocation?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we begin this meeting by giving you thanks for all the blessings you've bestowed on us. Tonight, we're especially thankful for the opportunity to live here in beautiful Frederick County and in this great nation where we enjoy the freedom to assemble and the freedom to express our opinions. And Father, we thank you for those who serve and have served in our armed forces defending that freedom, and especially pause to express our gratitude for those who made the ultimate sacrifice so that we might gather here tonight. Father, make us more deeply aware of our heritage, realizing not only our rights but also our duties and responsibilities as citizens. And Father, we ask you guide our discussions here tonight so that our words and our actions will be pleasing in your sight. In your heavenly name, we pray. Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand face the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adopted to the agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are no changes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab F, the Parks and Recreation Commission report. Tab G, Human Resources Committee report. And tab H, Public Works Committee report.
All right. We've heard the suggestion for the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Supervisor Wells makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Tabs F, G, and H. Citizen comments. Mr. Rowley, did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
Board supervisors' comments. Are there any? Hearing none. Budget work session minutes of February 5, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval. It's submitted.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the budget work session, February 5, 2014, are approved. Next, it is our pleasure to do a presentation. Vice Chairman DeHaven, would you join me? Would you come up and join us?
Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Shannon M. Foltz for consideration as Employee of the Month for February 2014. Shannon serves the Frederick County Public Safety Communications Department and is being awarded for her achievement in being 100% compliant in emergency medical dispatch. Shannon is recognized for being the only communications officer to ever do so. Her compliance and dedication truly makes a difference when handling emergency calls. Shannon is commended for her professionalism and dedication to her career in dispatch. I will now entertain a motion to approve Shannon M. Foltz as Employee of the Month for February 2014.
It moves.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Shannon M. Foltz is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for February 2014. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to you for your outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes you continued success in future endeavors. Thank you so much.
Next is committee appointments, but I'm going to get fired up here. I'm going to look at yours. I'm going to get you back there. Human Resources Committee, I'd like for you to give me a little bit more time to work on that. NPO Citizens Advisory Committee, you have a recommendation before you. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the approval of Mr. Reed for that position.
All right. We have a motion to appoint Thomas P. Reed. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Reed is hereby appointed as this NPO Citizen Advisory Committee. Next is the Community Policy and Management Team. I believe we're still waiting on a recommendation. Mr. Rowley?
Yes, sir.
Historic Resources Advisory Board, Red Bud, are we ready?
No, sir.
Parks and Recreation Commission, Red Bud, are we ready?
I have a phone call on Ms. Sibley, but I haven't heard back from him yet.
Sanitation Authority, I'd like for you to pause a little bit on that. I haven't had a chance to talk with Mr. Maury. And that concludes those. Next is a request from the Frederick County Schools to schedule a public hearing date to participate in the spring 2014 Virginia Public School Authority VPSA bond sale. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The school board is requesting that we set a public hearing date for April 9, 2014 for application for the spring bond sale. The proceeds from the spring bond sale will satisfy the projected cash needs until the next bond sale in the fall. The funds are for the replacement middle school project for $3.1 million and for architectural and engineering services for the fourth high school at $1.6 million. The amount of the bond application is $4.7 million.
Questions of Mr. Rowley. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we set the matter for public hearing on April 9.
All right. We have a motion to conduct the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes. Next is a resolution in reference to performance agreement with Pactive LLC. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to participate in the performance agreement with Pactive LLC. The amount is $50,000 that will come from unreserved fund balance for $5 million in machinery and tools, equipment improvements, and the addition of 25 new jobs. This is also a commitment of Pactive to stay within this community.
Questions of Mr. Rowley. Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Hess to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is the Finance Committee report. Supervisor DeHaven?
The Finance Committee met in First floor Conference Room, 107 North Kent Street, on Wednesday, February 19, 2014, at 8:00 a.m. All members were present. Items number two, four, and six were approved under the consent agenda, and I would so move.
We have a motion to place two, four, and six under consent. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Fire and Rescue Chief requested general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $85,352. This amount represents the fire program funds received and will be distributed to the 11 volunteer fire and rescue stations. No local funds are required. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Northwest Regional Adult Detention Center Superintendent requests an NRADC fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $221,000 to cover overtime costs. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Deputy Planning Director requests a developmental projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $45,300. This amount represents proffer funds needed for the Valley Mill Road project. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
Last action item, Mr. Chairman, is the county administrator requested a discussion on the new Round Hill Fire Station. The committee recommends that we proceed with the site plan and further consideration on the subdivision of the property into two parcels, and I would so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes.
concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Next is a public hearing. Conditional use permit 01-14 of Wesley W. Rudolph. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You having trouble getting fired up, too? I know how it feels.
This is a CUP, a conditional use permit request from Mr. Rudolph in the Star Tannery area of the community. It's a request for a public garage without body repair. He's actually looking to repair small engines, small tractors, and things of that nature, things that you'd see in that part of the community. The property is located at 2360 South Pfeifer Road, and it's in the Back Creek Magisterial District. I'm going to try to orient you here. The property is just off of South Pfeifer, and I apologize, our technology is not looking too good up on the screen. But what I wanted to show you is, this is the area. You can see, he's got a little compound of three buildings and his house. So that's where we're looking to apply this conditional use permit. The beauty also of the area is, you can see, there's not really anything around him, and we haven't received any complaints. So I think that's a good sign that the use is probably compatible in that area. Public garages without auto body repair are permitted in the RA zoning district with the CUP, and that's why we're here this evening, seeking your approval. It is a 29-acre parcel, and obviously, looking at the little compound of housing and structures, it's only going to be taking place on probably about a 2- to 3-acre portion of this property. There are no vehicle sales promoted or encouraged by the applicant, and we aren't granting that permission through the CUP, nor are we allowing part sales, so it's solely a repair operation. The Planning Commission considered this and has forwarded a recommendation for approval with a number of conditions. I'm going to read these conditions because they're different than what the planning staff presented. Planning Commission had a very healthy discussion, and they felt they wanted this use to not only exist, but they wanted to have the flexibility that we weren't limiting how much activity was occurring within the structure. So the Planning Commission has recommended some conditions that provide the flexibility to allow as many repairs as he can occur inside his building, and I think that's an important aspect. But the conditions that have been forwarded for your consideration is, review agencies and requirements shall be complied with at all times. Number two, all proposed business signs shall conform to the cottage occupation sign requirements, which shall not exceed four square feet in size and five feet in height. Number three, operation is limited to the applicant and one employee. Number four, all repair activities, and I'm adding emphasis, and storage shall occur within an enclosed structure. That was a condition that the Planning Commission revised on us, and I want to make sure it gets carried forward. Number five, hours of operation shall be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and there's no repair activities on Sunday. And the sixth condition was, any expansion or change of use shall require new CUP. Now, since the Planning Commission forwarded that recommendation, we had a good discussion, and Supervisor Hess participated in the discussion, and we felt that these conditions that the Planning Commission has forwarded recommendation for, while their intent was to provide flexibility, they actually excluded an opportunity to store any of the vehicles, any of the tractors, outside of an enclosed structure. And we think that there ought to be that flexibility. The zoning ordinance would have allowed him to have up to five vehicles kept outside, but because of the condition that number four said everything's got to be inside the building, we felt we're going to suggest we add another condition, and that's the condition number seven that we've got up there that says, no more than five vehicles awaiting repair may be stored outside of the enclosed structure. By definition, vehicle could be an automobile, but it is also a tractor. So that provides that flexibility. We've talked to the applicant. He is here this evening, and he's comfortable with these seven conditions. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and would note that Mr. Rudolph is here this evening. Should you have questions for him?
Questions to staff?
I just...
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Lawrence kind of answered my question, because my question was to find a vehicle, but you're saying that does include riding tractors, that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Where does the prohibition of activity on Sunday come from? The neighbors, the applicant, the staff?
To be honest, I don't have the answer for that.
It's a limitation. I'm wondering, who wants him to have a limitation?
Yeah. I don't... Obviously, we didn't get any complaints. This isn't a result of a violation.
You usually have that on everything.
So certainly, if we feel it's inappropriate, then we can modify that condition. I don't have the background, unfortunately.
I'm trying to respond to the nature of the reason it's there, and you're telling me there's not one?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, if the applicant doesn't want to work on Sundays, we don't have to restrict that. That's certainly his call. No, not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions of the staff? Did the applicant wish to speak? I saw him here.
I don't have any comments unless you have a question for...
Perhaps you could come up. Do you want to have the Sunday exclusion on there?
I mean, I didn't ask for it. It was something that was set forth by the Planning Commission. It could at times probably restrict me. You know, I don't typically do a lot of work on Sunday, but there may be a time where something was needed.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? The applicant?
Kind of follow-up on your suggestion. We're saying the hours of operation. What do the hours... What does operation entail? Meeting customers, greeting customers, or again, allowing someone to work inside on the equipment that has been brought to them during that day?
And this condition's probably something we've copied out of other CUPs for automobile repair, which is what we're looking at. But the hours of operation, any activity to do with business, so repairing customers' vehicles, customers' equipment, and meeting customers on the site. His mode of operation for the tractors, I believe, is to actually go pick the tractors up and bring them back to his property, so that hours of operation wouldn't affect that aspect.
But I was thinking of a small engine repair, chainsaws, those kind of things. That's something that could be done inside, and nobody would know it was even been done.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? The applicant? Thanks, sir. Okay. We'll conduct the public hearing now on a conditional use permit 01-14 of Wesley W. Rudolph for a public garage without body repair. Property is located at 2360 South Pfeifer Road and is identified with property identification number 81-A-50 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this conditional use permit? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. This is Back Creek.
Mr. Chairman, a little more discussion. If we intend to make the conditions of this conditional use permit less restrictive, is that allowed after the public hearing?
Yes. Mr. Williams? All that was advertised was the... The conditions were not advertised.
Exactly. The fact... All that's advertised is the fact of the permit and not the conditions. It's really perhaps analogous to the way proffers can be handled in rezonings, and modifications can be made at or during or after the public hearing. I think in this case, too, the modifications that it sounds like are under discussion are certainly not major ones.
Then I would... Mr. Lawrence? Okay.
Sorry. Then I would kind of like to make a motion that we approve CUP number 01-14 for Wesley Rudolph, but with the change in the restrictions or the conditions that have been so far stated, and that is the hours of operation, I, like you, see no reason why they could not take place on Sunday, so I would remove that.
Thank you.
I would also, and I'm not exactly sure to what extent, but even at 6:00 p.m., knowing Mr. Rudolph as I do, I'm not so sure he wouldn't be out there later than that trying to work on equipment that someone needs and it's important for them to have. So I'm not so sure that 6:00 p.m., if it's going to be work taking place inside that enclosure, that that should also be a restriction. Probably move that maybe to 9:00 p.m. And with those changes, again, I would recommend approval of the CUP number 01-14.
For a point of clarification, does he need to add in that seven?
Yeah. We would like you to...
Because it didn't come from Planning Commission?
Oh, I'm sorry. And my comments plus condition number seven, that no more than five vehicles may be stored outside of the enclosed structure.
Now, for clarification purposes, you've added seven, you've deleted the Sunday, and you extended the nine, six to nine?
Extended the 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and also eliminated Eliminated his limit on working on Sunday. Does that make sense? Is that clear? Shall I restate it?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. Discussion. I just don't know why personally we have to have any limitations on his business unless it somehow or other adversely affects his neighbors, which doesn't seem likely. And I wonder if we maybe failed to just not take something from one thing to another, but if there's a purpose, I'd want there. But I guess I'm half happy and half wondering why we even got anything there. He gets a call at 10:00 to come. I don't know if he's running a wrecker or not. Got to take it back. Is that hours of operation? I don't really care when he works in these building. And I suspect sometimes this is done to not have traffic, public traffic affecting other people, but it doesn't seem to be the case here. So that's my comments. We have a motion in a second, but I don't have to say it.
I'd accept an amendment if you wanted to make an amendment to that, or if someone wanted to make an amendment to...
Just delete number five?
...operation.
I'd want to ask staff if there's harm in that.
It's certainly... It's a prerogative, but it's... We can recognize that where this property is located, there's not going to be any neighbors that'll be impacted, so eliminating the restrictions, whether it's the days of the week or the hours, certainly seems reasonable.
We have a motion in a second. It's going to take an amendment or a change in the motion in second. So you want to amend, or what do you want to do, or nothing?
I would amend, and I'd be willing to make... When he works in his building, I think that, you know, depending on circumstances, that's irrelevant to me. Do we just remove, amend, to amend the motion to remove...
Condition five?
Condition five.
Okay. We have a motion, amendment, to delete section or condition five in its entirety. Is there a second to that?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Now, we'll vote on the amendment, which is to delete section five in its entirety. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Now, five is not there. We're back to the original motion, which deletes part of the necessity for the Sunday, but we'll vote on the amended motion, which adds seven now and...
Deletes five.
Everyone clear? Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton? Next, a discussion on public facilities and the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan amendment brought back to the board from February twelfth, twenty-fourteen board meeting. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At our discussion at your last meeting, express, concern was expressed about the flexibility that was given in where community facilities could be located. Of course, the purpose behind this amendment is to make them as accessible as possible for the citizens of Frederick County, not just in the location, but also through technology. So as a result of the discussion that we had, we've expanded the location to be urban areas, the Surin Water Service Area, and of course, urban centers. So that broadens it by including the Surin Water Service Area. What staff did was take a look at, of course, community facilities, public facilities as a use, understood which zoning districts where that could be located. That would be the rural areas within the Surin Water Service Area, the B-two, the M-one, in addition, the O-M district, I'll point that out. So we recognized where those uses could go and made sure that the language was expanded to allow that. You'll see in the text, the Surin Water Service Area is highlighted in red, and that is that expansion, which hopefully gets to the locational concern about community facilities. That's the additional clarification we put in there, and again, we're looking to move this thing amendment forward through the public hearing process, if indeed the board feels it's appropriate to do so. We can certainly continue to look at the language if necessary, too.
Questions? I brought the issue up, and they have more than adequately satisfied me by saying exactly the same thing in all three places, and that was my major concern, and so I no longer have concerns. What was this when it came before? Headed for public hearing?
It was a discussion item with looking for direction to go to public hearing.
Okay. All right. What is your pleasure now?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we forward to public hearing.
All right, we have a motion forward to public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing done. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posse no. Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Are there any board liaison reports? Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
Was it? In between meetings last or time before that the joint finance met?
Let's see, joint finance actually met last week.
Not sure there's really anything to report out of that, but it did happen.
It did. We, the report's coming in the next agenda, which is what we're ready.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Supervisor Lofton?
The E D C had set up a subcommittee to review one of the recommendations made by the Business Friendly Committee that has to do with signage entering Frederickany.
Does the E D C exist anymore?
This is back when E D C did exist.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, but now, we made that recommendation to the E D A, which is a body now recognized, and the E D A took a look at this recommendations, but went in a different direction. The E D A chair formed another subcommittee with a different direction to look at those signs. We have met, we have made a recommendation, and we were reporting that back to the E D A for their action. So just to let you know, there is still movement on that particular recommendation.
Mr. Riley, when do you expect your next report on those items that, were you going to periodically update?
Yes, sir, and we have been focused on the E D A, and we will get back on pending recommendations back to this body as to status.
Now, if we could take a moment here, I sense that the board needs to revisit the issue of boardship, membership somewhere, somehow. I haven't had a chance to talk with Mr. Riley and brainstorm over how that might happen, but I would be most comfortable if somehow or other of the board revisited it again for a change of opinion or a reaffirmation of where we last were, but I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Riley about it. Anybody want to support that or say they don't need it? Think anything else is needed?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. We need to sit down and revisit that.
Okay, what about the rest of you?
Yeah.
Mr. Riley, I'll come up with something. How about that? Any other liaison reports? Citizen comments. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on any topic? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone? Yes, come forward.
Good evening. My name is Joy Kirk. I'm the president of the Frederick County Education Association and a resident of the Back Creek District. I'm here tonight to request of the board consideration of advertising a tax increase. I feel it would be respectful to the citizens to allow us the opportunity to see the different scenarios that you've seen, so that we can be informed about what the different options are at not raising the taxes at a three, six, and nine cent tax increase. So I ask you respectfully to please consider an advertisement of at least a six cent tax increase, so that we can have a discussion as citizens and the public about the benefits and disadvantages of the different scenarios. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Keith Aklader, and I'm from the Apeken District in Stevens City. I stand before you tonight to ask the question, why not? Why not entertain the idea of a tax increase? I know you're ultimately thinking to yourself that an advertisement of a tax increase will send the idea to the community that a tax increase is imminent. However, simply, this simply isn't true. Well, I'd like to see a raise in the revenue to enhance police, fire, and the school system. It doesn't mean that it will happen with an advertisement of a tax increase. In the meantime, that would give the opportunity for both sides of the aisle to present their thoughts, so that you can make an informed decision. After hearing all sides, you can simply strike down the idea if it doesn't represent what your constituents want. From an article in the Winchester Star a week ago, we learned that due to budget constraints, that Frederick County will likely see dramatic cuts to the sheriff's office, fire and rescue, park maintenance, and ultimately, the school system. Once again, I ask the question, why not? Why not entertain the idea of advertising a tax increase that could fill the void of these potential deficits? In the end, it doesn't mean that a tax increase will become a reality. In closing, I hope you will answer the question, why not, by voting yes to the idea of a tax increase, so dialogue can begin from both sides. Thank you for keeping an open mind on this matter.
Next.
Good evening. Alan Morrison from Gainsborough District did send an email to Mr. Sickel and Mr. Hess today after a great deal of difficulty with the county website. You'll notice they came directly to you and not through the website, and that problem seems to have been repaired at this time. Considering that this county has managed its finances far greater than the federal government and what appears to be the direction of the state government, I do understand the difficulty that you have to face in making these decisions. We've grown into a society where everybody has their hand out expecting free money. Problem is, no money is free. The economic situation in the county, state, and nation is far from what anybody would desire. Many people in this area have lost their jobs or are working with reduced hours, so that the income level to the household is not increasing. Thereby, the county, the state, the federal government needs more money. They simply take it, to put it frankly and bluntly. The family situation has not that ability. And I would expect that, you know, any government entity, whether it be the county or the federal government, would make sure that the use of the funds that they are dealing with are the most efficient possible. That they would model themselves more after what a family would have to do in the same circumstances, and not merely reach out and take the money that is available. So I understand you have a difficult process that you have to go through. I understand that not everybody is going to end up happy. And I understand that many departments have been cut short over these last few years. But until the economic situation improves dramatically, I think we have to remain to be very careful. Thank you.
Next. Anyone else?
My name is Melinda Russell. I apologize for being late. I was trying to finish up at my studio tonight to get here on time. I live on Parishville Road in Gore, and I'm a Frederick County Education Association member, and I teach music at Red Bed Run Elementary School. And all I want to say is please support a tax increase to better fund the fire and rescue and police and education. Thank you so much, and thank you for all that you do.
Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Dottie Stottlemyre, and I'm from the Shawnee District. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but it appears that the website is not working where you can put your comments for the rate increase. Is that correct? I'm not for sure.
I don't know, but I'm sure a note was taken to get it checked out.
Because I sent all of you gentlemen an email earlier last night, but basically, the gist of my email was that I understand how difficult it is to put together a budget to run a county, and in doing so, we're talking about cutting millions now from our budget. But we're also talking about building another building that is going to cost some money. When our building here, this building here, is going to be paid for in December, if I'm not mistaken. And certainly, those monies that would have been used to be making those payments could maybe be put towards maybe some increases in the education, increases in our safety, police cruisers, maybe a school bus or two. So I would encourage you guys to maybe think ahead, and instead of raising our taxes again, because we just had that done two years ago. And miraculously, we had some money found, I believe, after the rate got raised, but our rates didn't go down. That you could perhaps think a little bit longer about maybe not trying to force another raise on some people who were living paycheck to paycheck. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no, we'll close this and comment portion of the meeting. Board of supervisors comments? There should be at least one. I have to do it?
I just want to indicate from, I believe I received all of the emails and question that members spoke about, so I know we had experienced some difficulties with the security.
I don't know, Mr. Riley, did you hear anything?
They had, they had made some revisions a couple of weeks ago, and to best of my knowledge.
Point of clarification, there is no request in the current budget for a new building. No request. There is nothing in the current budget for a new building. There is the budgeted, in the current budget allocations for the debt service on this building, but there is no request outstanding or included or being considered for a new building. Mr. Riley, confirm.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other comments? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm trying to look here for email, and I don't see it.
I believe they're saying, Mr. Fisher, that they went through the county's website.
It's a county one.
Yeah.
It's the one that says Webmaster on. There you go.
Just hold a little second.
We'll definitely check into that.
Someone's got three email accounts. It's difficult sometimes.
I received some.
I know the one you're talking about. Well, I think, we shouldn't have this, but I think Mr. Chibs is about to update the contact list, and so we might give you a better one. The county provides us one, and we have personal ones.
I received your email, Mr. Riley.
Yeah.
Do better. Mr. Collins got it?
I got it.
It's all matters.
Mr. Fisher searching.
I've got stuff here for you.
I got some.
Mr. Chairman, I made for chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion? I'm sorry. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posse no. Meeting adjourned.